questionable, the backup trace was over here warming up, he is now in the
Becky. Uh, hold on, I can't hear you.
What's up, David?
Oh, there you go. Okay. I seem to be having problems with my Surface. Is there, who, who can I bring it in to have it looked at? It's like, it's as if it's not working at all. It keeps just spinning, saying that it needs to reboot, and then it reboots, and then it says, didn't download properly, needs to reboot, it just continues.
Um, do you know where Drive Tech is over in Acton?
I don't.
Okay, um, it's really easy. Um, I can hook you up tomorrow, or I'll send them an email now.
I doubt I can get over there until Friday at the earliest.
All right. Um, yeah, because they, they don't really come into Town Hall either. I mean, they're kind of on COVID.
Yeah. Where are they located in Acton?
Um, it's right in, um, uh, you know where the pharmacy is near the train tracks?
In West Acton?
Yes.
I know where, I know where the pharmacy is, yep.
Yeah, so I can send you their address. Let me send it to you by email. Um, because there's somebody in the building that they're in there at, or if you left your Surface Pro at the Maynard Police Station, I bet we could get somebody to pick it up from the Maynard Police Station.
Yeah. Are they in the building with the pharmacy?
No, they, they have their own building, they're in their own building, but it's on the same road that, Greg Johnson lives on.
Okay, Stephanie just brought it into me, so it might be working now, so I'm gonna check it, because it wasn't working. It wasn't working earlier, so. So I had to go to Plan B to try to, saying welcome. Never mind, Becky, I think I'm all set.
Okay, all right, well, I'll scratch this email.
Thank you.
So is this?
You all set for Christmas, Becky, with the grandchildren?
Not really. Um, we're gonna, we might, I don't know. It's probably gonna be FaceTime. You know, it just, it's too risky.
Hmm. Yep. Hey, Greg.
Hey. Oh.
Using your PC as a mirror, another, another change in 2020, right?
You're right, I did see my, that's exactly what I was doing. Good evening.
Hey, Jeff.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Good, thanks.
Good evening. Any word from Megan? Is she doing all right with the baby?
Yeah, I got a text message with a picture of the,
I saw the one, I saw the one right, right after birth, you know, like the,
Yeah.
The traditional, have you seen others?
Yes, so I saw one with Molly, who's the older girl, holding Winnie, it, like, on her lap, with the hand off, you can see an adult hand. Uh, you know, on the couch in their house, so that's, they're doing good, they're doing good.
I was telling Greg today that a couple of our round restaurants downtown have decided to, close their doors for about three months.
Really?
Yeah.
So, is it public which ones yet?
I, I guess, um, Al Whipple and Azuka.
Oh. I mean, Azuka had already, I believe, had already decided to close for a little while. Okay.
Well, maybe you do that, I didn't.
Sort of like their marketing, the whole way they're set up doesn't really work in this environment, you know, for Azuka. You know, you have, you have to be, you have to be in there for a while, you know, it's just sort of an ambiance thing versus a, a real restaurant, so I'm sure it was a struggle for them, for that part of the business. I'm sorry, so they're not even doing takeout over at Al Whipple? Really?
They think maybe March they'll reopen.
Blue Coyote announced also they're closing.
They're closing for good, yeah.
Yeah, the prior owner is gonna be potentially turning in paperwork in January for us.
If they can't rent the place.
Yeah.
They're gonna try and rent it first.
Prior to, the prior owner to the current Blue Coyote, or like, the current owner, the prior owner of the Blue Coyote?
Prior, the, the couple that own the building ran the Blue Coyote until they sold the business to Tech.
Yeah, okay.
And so they're gonna, they, they have the building back, and now they're either gonna rent it or potentially do something themselves.
What was it before the Blue Coyote? I'm trying to remember back.
Amory's.
Amory's. And then before Amory's, there was another name to it.
That's before my time.
So Greg, who's running our tech? I see we're now live streaming on Facebook. Who's, you are, you're the tech guy? So, all right, so we know who to play.
We know where this is. Because I, this is the, only the second time I've been on Facebook since the last Board of Selectmen meeting when I tried to figure it out.
And so, that explains, that explains why we might have some technical difficulties.
Everyone keep their fingers crossed. I'm, I'm not a very good millennial in this way, I'm, I'm trying.
Megan's probably watching on Facebook and she's gonna judge you, just FYI.
Yeah, she'll text me. If it's working, I hope it's working.
All right, so it is seven o'clock. Wow, let me check, so I have Chris, Jeff, me, Armand, hello, Armand, and David. All right. So I will open the meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Excellent, I'm obviously here as well. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
I see Chief Noble on, you don't have to comment, that's fine, Chief W. you're on, and I'm sure we'll have other people joining us as well. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all public, all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for the meeting tonight, except for any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend that members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless I note otherwise. Again, in order to get to Board Docs, what you would do is go to the Town page, Board of Selectmen, Agenda Packet, and then the agenda will come up and you can follow along with the documentation there. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair, I will go down the member, line of members, inviting each by name to provide a comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in ways that help generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you, and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask, first ask, members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the chair has a list of all public commentators, will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So that being said, I will ask, I do hear a little bit of background noise, because I just asked that people make sure that they are muted. I appreciate that. And we'll move on to the first, even though I just asked everyone to mute. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay. Not hearing anything. We will move on. For the acceptance of minutes. Uh, just, okay, actually, thank you. On the acceptance of minutes, I will entertain a motion.
It moved to accept the, and approve the meeting minutes of December 1st, 2020, as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Anybody have any comments? Regarding the minutes? All right. Then, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion regarding correspondences.
All right, move to accept and approve correspondences A through H, as shown.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Armand. Does anybody have any comments regarding any of these correspondences? No? All right. Okay, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Um, next is consent agenda, so I will entertain a motion regarding that.
I'll move to, to approve the consent agenda item as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any comments or questions regarding me? All pretty standard. Um, okay. Um, the one question I have, Becky, can we get the, can we have that? I'm sorry, Lieutenant Cushing, can we have that as not acting? Permanent. Okay, no, that's okay. You're muted, but yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was in there, so.
Yeah.
All right, um, anybody else have anything? All right, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, next, the Green Meadow Building Project. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the design enrollment certification from the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the town of Maynard, Green Meadow Elementary School, and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
Yeah, Greg, quickly. Just so that we understand the, the process here, what commitment is, is the town making with this authorization? Beyond just moving forward in this preliminary process to look at the feasibility?
No, that's a good question. So I'm not that familiar with the process, to be able to say what level of commitment. I think that the, I think that, to your point, this does inform that, that phase that we are in towards Green Meadow Elementary School, which is the feasibility space. So I believe it's more fact finding. So it, it's, it's more like a, my understanding, it's, it's a, it's a snapshot of where they are as enrollment, and that will inform their, their design for, for the feasibility, so they can design a new, whether it be a new elementary school renovations, wherever the case may be, to meet our needs. They're just assessing what our needs are.
So it's not committing the community or the town to any additional funding at this time, in any fashion?
I mean, no, that's not my understanding. I think right, right now, our commitment is what we've already appropriated, which is the feasibility study.
Yep, okay.
Greg, do you know any more about the logic of the number with, with the 395? Especially given that the history they have in there shows that we, we, for the last decade have had more than 395 students K through three.
So I'll have to admit, I'm not an expert in how they determine this number. I, I was provided this by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and then I asked for the school department to verify it before I submitted it back, so I would, unless there was someone from the school department, whether it be the superintendent's office or the school committee's office, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that, but I can get that answer for you if you would like.
I actually have that, a similar question, and I don't know, I see Lydia's on, but I'm not sure if she's prepared to answer, so if you're not Lydia, that's perfectly fine.
No, I am, I have my hand raised.
Oh, did, oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so the letter basically just verifies, they're saying, these are the numbers we have, according to the information you've provided us, is this accurate? And we're just verifying, yes, this is accurate. The 395, they only count kindergarten through third grade. So that's part of why that number may be lower than what you're used to seeing, because pre-K is not included. Um, and they go back a number of years, and they also look at the projected numbers for the next, I think, five to 10 years, and then they have some formula that figures out the number of students that they are going to base the design on. Um, and then, Justine, what was your question?
So my question was actually, is it that they don't, I, I was reading the letter and I couldn't quite understand, is it that they don't consider pre-K at all when they're doing this type of program?
Correct. So what would happen is, is they are, the 395 is what they would base the square footage that will be reimbursable by the MSBA. We can, of course, go ahead and do designs for the pre-K, but we would be 100% responsible for, for any pre-K design and building.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because that's, I, I just want to make sure that if, if we end up going forward with whatever we end up going forward with for this building, or renovation, or whatever it's gonna end up being, I know that I feel like the high school, it, it, the high school quickly outgrew its space, and I would be concerned that we're gonna do, we're already setting ourselves up for failure or for challenges if we don't include the pre-K, but if we can't.
Although at this point, sorry to interrupt, at this point, the high school is actually underpopulated, and therefore, we're considering moving the eighth grade up because of that.
Okay. Okay.
That wouldn't impact this. Lydia, so I think the numbers that they have in for the, the previous decade is, is labeled as K through three, but do you know how they went into making the, you know, the 10-year forward projection?
Yeah, I believe they look at the NESDEC, which is the New England, shoot, I'm gonna get it wrong. I can get that for you, but it's any S, D, E, Q, no, C, DEC. And, and they do studies, we get all of our numbers from them, so, for instance, last spring, when we were discussing budget and looking at projections for enrollment, we get our numbers from NESDEC.
Okay, okay, that, that helps, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lydia, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Nope, no worries.
Uh, does anybody else have any other questions about this? All right. So, all in favor? So actually, do we have to sign this? It looks like it's actually just the chief executive officer, so is that?
That's you. So the, no, I mean, the, the board is the executive body of the town.
Okay, all right.
I'm the chief administrative officer.
Got it, okay. All right, so all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes, as well. Um, per conversation, and David, I don't know, were you at the meeting last night for?
I was, I was, yeah, the, the, there was a motion made to have Town Council look at a portion of the application relative to the affordable unit, kind of technicality, you know, the, the, there's 10 units going on into this project, and one of them will be affordable, and the, the trust wants to make sure that there's equitable assignment of the affordable unit. In other words, it appeared, and we, we don't know if it's In other words, it appeared, and we don't know if it's true or not, but it appeared that the lot that was selected to be the affordable unit in this project had a smaller backyard than any of the other homes in the development, and that it was on Route 27 versus being in the cul-de-sac, et cetera. So there was some discussion about whether or not that met the requirements to be equitable for an affordable unit. So we're having town council review our bylaw and our zoning requirements, and then it will come back to us, it was no, you know, it was not controversial relative to the issue of the affordable unit itself and everything else, it was just making sure that we're not, lack of a better word, shortchanging the affordable unit from the others, because the intent is that the affordable unit is just like, if not, you know, you know, it's equitable to all of the others, and it doesn't get the smallest yard, and the smallest, you know, the worst driveway, and all this other stuff. And we do this, we did the same thing when we did it for apartment buildings, where we were making sure that certain floors weren't limited to, from affordable units, or that certain units that were, that, you know, had better amenities weren't excluded, that garages weren't excluded, et cetera, and this is just another step. It's the first time we've done a housing project versus an apartment complex with affordable unit aspect, so we wanted to be absolutely sure. So a motion was made to have it reviewed by council, we expect to have a meeting in probably, it could be in December still, but it's more likely to be in early January, and it'll come back to the board at that time, it's already been approved by the planning board, and we're the next step that has to, that has to be done, and then it'll come back to this, to this board for final approval.
Okay, so then we'll just table that for tonight, and revisit it when it's time.
Yep.
Probably in the new year. All right, so.
Where is Old Bay Road?
It's a new road, Chris, it's, you know, it's at the bottom of Vos Hill. If you take a right-hand turn between the bottom of Vos Hill and where the rehabbed small little condos are down the road on the left-hand side. So from like where the road that heads down to Melissa's neighborhood?
Yeah.
From Vos Hill down to that area on the other side of the street is where this neighborhood's going to be.
All right.
And there'll be a cul-de-sac at the end down towards where that first house is, the current house, that goes back into the woods, and there'll be a circle back there with, and a total of 10 homes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're moving pretty fast, too.
They've got four built, well, four foundations.
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 Okay.
All right. Then let's move on to item seven, which is a final approval to change the DBA name for license holder for Spirits of Maynard, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amendment to the retail alcoholic beverage license, to reflect the change of doing business as the B A application approved by the A B C C and the Board of Selectmen for Spirits of Maynard for Digital Way Suite 3, Maynard, Mass, authorize use of digital signature if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, David. All right, Greg, you want to talk us through this one, I think it's pretty much just keeping at this point?
Yeah, so the board had already approved the initial application, it was submitted to A B C C, now it's back. So this is, if you all recall, this is sort of like a rebranding that they wanted to do to tie it into their other storage, I think, is in Concord, but I don't, maybe.
Yeah, West Concord, yeah.
Yeah, very good. I'm actually surprised I remember that, but no, so that was, that was the plan, and this is just the final application, and I think the board was amenable to in the first place. So I don't know if the applicant is, I don't know if the say is, are on.
I believe he is, I can see.
So if you'd like to hear from him, you can, in my Brady, I don't see the, I can't see him in my.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sayah? I'm probably saying that wrong. All right. Okay. That is fine, then all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so.
Excellent.
Congratulations, good luck, can't wait to see more open over that side, so that's very cool.
I think they're ready for January from what I understand.
Fantastic. All right, next, we're going to go to item number eight, recreational marijuana retailer license, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve and issue the retail marijuana package goods store, Masswell Springs, at 4 to 6 Nation Street. Manager is Olaf Ngari, authorization of, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Greg?
Similar sort of procedure, except for the Cannabis Control Commission, instead of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, so the CCC. So the board had, actually, but obviously much more extensive when it comes to marijuana. So just to kind of refresh everyone, Mr. Ngari, I'm probably just saying, oh, I don't like go by Olaf, but Olaf had come to the Board of Selectmen asking for approval for, to move into negotiations for host community agreement, the host community agreement was approved. That was all submitted to the Cannabis Control Commission, as well as, and then the board had also approved his application to the Cannabis Control Commission, it went to planning board, that he got approval from planning board, anyways, this is kind of the last step, not kind of, this is the last step. This is, this is it, so this is, this is the license. And I believe Olaf has been, you know, working with the fire department, police department, health agent, Kelly Polichanek, just visited him the other day. And for the public who's not aware, 4 to 6 Nation Street is the storefront next to, I think it's next to Raspberry Beret, but it's across the way from Serendipity. And you can kind of see some of the work that he's been doing on the inside, I think he put some nice Christmas trees up. But, so that's where we are, this is kind of historic for the town, this, if, you know, depending on how the board, how the board acts, I think Olaf should be with us. I did. Olaf, are you, are you here tonight? Unless he's one of the folks I muted.
All right, there we go, can you hear me?
I did mute you, sorry, Olaf.
Yeah, thank you, guys, so thank you, everything, thanks for everything, because it's been a pleasure working with everyone in Maynard so far, and right now, we're waiting for the CCC to come back with the final license, we should be ready to open in two, three days, but I anticipate that CCC will take another two months to finalize everything. So far, we have hired five Maynard residents, and we are training them in acting right now, so that's where we are right now.
So once you get the license approved, if you get the license approved by the board, to the Cannabis Control Commission, and then it's another two months?
No, so basically, if we get the vote today from you guys, we're still waiting for the CCC to issue the final license, and unfortunately, they have to, they have to vote on the board level. So even if the CCC inspectors and agents, they say that we are ready to go, they still need to vote on it on the state level, and they only meet once a month. And unfortunately, they do not have a full board right now, so the vote may not be until end of January, maybe even in February, but hopefully, they will appoint everyone, and they will vote on our application as soon as possible.
Okay.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for either Greg or Olaf?
If this gets approved, Olaf can come get the book from the town of Maynard for his license tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you.
I see the notes that Chief Noble approved everything, chief, I'm looking at you, you're all good?
Yes, we have a worked out security plan and how things will be delivered and all of that, yes.
All right.
All right, Becky, did you want to, I just want to double check, you said that he can come by and pick that up, is that appointment only, should he call first, or does he know the process at this point?
Well, I'm in there at 7:00 AM, and people either knock at the door, or they call my line, and we run out to the door and take care of our business, our folks outside.
Yeah, call first, because the knocking is sometimes a little loud, just not call first.
Well, it wakes you off?
Yeah, no, it's just loud.
All right.
Well, that'll end.
So angry.
You don't want them throwing rocks at the window, so.
They're on camera.
All right, all right, moving on, so anybody else have any other questions for either Olaf or Greg or the chief? All right, then all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so good luck.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Oh, you too.
All right. Okay, moving on to item number nine, regarding the Human Relations Committee, and is to consider a policy that they are proposing relative to monitoring of rehabilitation efforts of housing on Railroad Street. Greg, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the Human Relations, I'll do introductions, the Human Relations Committee was formed more than a year, maybe a year and a half, two years ago. And they, you know, through this, through the charge, they sometimes take on advocacy for, you know, various interests that the Human Relations Committee has, but particularly recently, the Railroad Street conditions of that housing has been a topic of discussion for the Human Relations Committee. They have met with the Board of Health, and I think the Human Relations Committee are proposing a topic for consideration by the Board of Selectmen, so I'd like to introduce Kathleen Fitzgerald, who is the chair, she was the co-chair with Rachel Tribbo, but now she is the chair. So, thank you, Kathleen, you look good.
You, so, thanks, everyone, thanks for having us tonight. Also here from the Human Relations Committee is Caroline Mahiti and Chief Nobles on the committee, and Shanika Warren, who's going to start on the committee in January, is here as well, she's also a resident of Railroad Street. So it's great that she's going to be joining us as well. But, yes, we, as a committee, we voted unanimously on this recommendation, and I'll just read the recommendation. We've since read Megan Zamuto's memo related to all of this, and we understand the sort of bureaucratic and some of the legal bureaucratic challenges, and some of the legal considerations that are going along with it, but we did want to get this on the record. So I'll read it to you, and then you can respond wherever you want. But it is our recommendation that the town of Maynard, Board of Selectmen, create a formal process in coordination with the Board of Health and the Maynard Town Administrator's Administration's Office for reporting on the status of rehabilitation efforts, including a projected timeline by the landlord of Railroad Street Apartments, whenever a complaint is brought forward to the Board of Health, be shared with the Human Relations Committee and the residents of the apartments involved. And I do want to say that we have not met with the Board of Health at all, I've gone to a couple meetings just as a community member, but we haven't been meeting with them, and we wrote a rationale that tenants and the tenants of the Railroad Street Apartments approached the Human Relations Committee in July of 2020 to seek help in resolving problems they are currently facing with the landlord on the status of their homes. While the Board of Health has carried out numerous inspections, and local residents are advocating for these tenants, this problem has been ongoing since 2018 with no follow-up process on actionable items, or hope for the tenants that it will ever be resolved. So that's what we've got.
Yeah, thank you, Kathleen.
Okay. And so, and so Kathleen's referencing, there was a memo that was attached as well, which was basically a summary by Assistant Town Administrator Zamuto of kind of a timeline of what has happened to this point. And so I'm just curious, and so Kathleen, you said that you guys, you've read this, and you have an understanding of what's been done to this point, so what are, what in addition to this are you looking for?
Well, you know, in the, in the, in the motion, and we had talked about it as a committee, that the residents that we're working with, and we're certainly not talking to all of the residents, but the people who are talking with us and that we're working with are, you know, they're not in touch with the, you know, Board of Selectmen or necessarily the Town Administrator's Office as much as they are in touch with us, and they're not necessarily in on all of the bureaucratic operations of, you know, what's happening in the fact that there are so many different apartments, and that there's so many pandemic-related obstacles. So it's hard for people, I believe, to kind of get a sense of what's going on, and so that's why, like, we were trying to brainstorm, well, how can people have a better sense that the city or the town is working on this, and things are going to be moving forward? And so this idea of having, you know, a timeline being put together, or you know, a list of the complaints being put together, and a timeline of when things are going to be done, kind of more transparent, or even like facilitating some communication, so it was, it was never that, oh, you know, you need to do this, or you need to do that, it was more just like, oh, let's just kind of take the onus off of the residents a little bit, because at one point, it was suggested, well, why don't we set up like a spreadsheet for the residents, if they make a complaint, then they fill out our spreadsheet too, but it felt like it shouldn't be, the onus shouldn't be on them, because they're already suffering, you know.
So, and is there a reason they don't feel comfortable reaching out to the agency that would be able to handle this, so the Board of Health, or the Building Inspector's Office, and things like that?
I don't know, I mean, we can, we can talk more about that with them. I don't know if they've maybe reached out before and didn't feel like they were responded to in a timely manner, or, you know, and it's multiple people with multiple stories, so it's not, it's hard to say for, you know, a blanket response. But I think, you know, we responded right away, and, you know, kind of have been inconstant or as much communication as we could be, and I think sometimes that's what it takes is, you know, because it's their homes, and I know people are, you all are, people are working on so many different things, and we're focusing on this, and so it feels better that, it feels like we're advocating for them, and it's.
Right, and I hear that, and I do, I do, I really do believe that, you know, the Human Relations Committee is one of these committees that, you know, we never really knew we needed until we needed it, right? And so, but knowing that there is a place for, so the way I personally see the committee is that it's a place where people who may not feel comfortable going somewhere can go, and then they can get the direction of where to go from there. So that's kind of, that's kind of been my interpretation of how the committee should be working. But I'm not really sure, and I welcome my board members' opinions on this also. The first part of it is, we don't, so, so we don't really, we wouldn't really, we wouldn't really create a policy regarding this, because we don't really, the policies that we create are a town-wide type policy, it's something that affects, you know, the police officers as a whole, or something like that, it's not department or or housing-specific, right? So that's not something that we would do, but I'm not sure if there's a way we can kind of come together to find, you know, to find some common ground. Does any of my other board members have any other questions or comments regarding this?
I have one quick comment, I'm familiar that, through the Affordable Housing Trust, we've discussed quite a bit, the South Middlesex Opportunity Council, I think it's called SMOC, is its acronym. And that is an organization that I believe is responsible in our area, among, Maynard, among other communities, for the Section 8 issues in our, in our region. So I'm wondering, from the town side, whether or not this is even. Um, so I'm wondering from the town's side whether or not this is even within the authority of the town. Uh, when the actual, um, management of the program for Section Eight. My understanding is that it's outside of Maynard per se and it belongs to another statewide organization. Greg, I don't know if you have any more insight into that or not. And whether or not we're creating or or looking to create, not that I don't think that there's a need for people to have access to resources. But whether or not we're creating a a policy per se that really doesn't apply because it's outside of the authority of the town of Maynard.
So, so yes, uh, in in reference to Megan's memo, you're correct in that the authority for particularly the for the affordable housing aspects of Railroad Street. Is, it's kind of spread between a couple of different agencies and one of which is Spock. And so, but as the, as the town, I see our obligation is to be, you know, we can be a receptacle, like we can receive complaints or we can receive notices or and whatnot, and then we can, we can feed that to.
Exactly.
Or to Action Housing, whoever else, and I believe we have been doing that. And and so. I think, I think Kathleen makes a good point in that, in that, you know, kind of keeping a track record of of where we think Railroad Street is and the conditions of Railroad Street. That is something I believe. Has been happening and is happening right now. So what, you know, and I believe that's housed all through Board of Health and particularly with the health agent who is, who herself has been doing those inspections. As well as in cooperation with the fire, fire department for the safety codes and whatnot, but, um. So we have some of that information, but the the catch is that we can't necessarily make it all transparent at this time, only because we may be going into a new phase. Of interactions with the property owner, which which might maybe a certain. I mean, it it might be pending litigation if if that, if that needs to be the case, in which case we do have to have like the executive privilege. Just so, you know, so we can be better poised to go into an executive session or to or to do any pending litigation with this. But that's, that is an indication itself about how seriously the town does take this matter. I mean, it is, is, this is. Everyone knows where Railroad Street is. We, I drive by it every day, so does most people in town, and it's a, and it's, it looks like, you know, the people there seem. Lively and jovial and and, but, you know, everyone also knows that the conditions of the housing is, there, there has been some issues with the conditions of the housing. I myself have stood in the cold when there was a fire in one of the units. I could watch the utility company try to address it right there. I mean, it. So the town recognizes all that, of course we do, and and. Unfortunately, I can't get into too much of the details because we're taking it so seriously that it may have to go to more legal actions. Now, I do have, I do have town council here represented by attorney Castro, if there is any questions. Um, and I think I'm kind of stepping on on what his, he would normally say, but.
Oh, that's fine. I'm I'm, am I audible to all?
Yeah, go ahead. This is.
Yeah, I mean, Kathy, I'm happy to answer any questions that I may, you know, I'm I'm able to answer. Um, but but what I can say is that, um. Um, Megan Zamuto and Kelly Polachanik have worked diligently with town council. Um. To try to resolve the ish, all the issues at the Railroad Street Apartments. Um. Uh, Megan, they've been especially diligent preparing, you know, a very detailed summary. Of every violation, um, those that have been remedied, those that haven't. Um, each and every violation, um, that's still pending and even those that have been reviewed by town council. Um, and we, um, we we we've advised the Board of Health. Um, as to all legal recourse available. Um, we've even gone so far as to draft a, um. A complaint to file in Superior Court. Um, so right now, all options are on the table and are being reviewed with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health at this time. However, um, just with respect to the motion and, um, the transparency. Um, uh, the, well, the transparency you want to really get from this process you're proposing. Um, laudable though that is, what we don't want to do is to be so transparent that we compromise, um. That the town's position or prejudice the town in litigating this if need be. Because doing so, you know, would defeat the purpose, I mean, that we're all seeking, which is to bring these properties in compliance with the sanitary code for the benefit of the tenants. And so that's kind of where we're at now. I'm happy to answer anything else that I can, but, um. Just so you know, nobody's trying to be, you know, close-fisted with information, you know, we're just, uh, doing our best to, um. Uh, ensure that the town goes into this if need be in the strongest position possible.
That makes sense. Um, one thing that we, and I think. Megan, um, talked about this in the memo. It just seems that, and this is a bigger housing. Issue, I guess, for the state to deal with, but it just seems that landlords can be just above board, just barely above board if they're constantly fixing things. Um, to the least. Um, or the lowest standard that's acceptable. And, um, it just seems that's the cycle that he's in and it just seems kind of crummy, but. That's, I guess that's just the cycle that he's constantly in, um, fixing things and then they fall out of repair and then he fixes them and then he barely fixes them and it just seems like. Um, are we, is that just what we're stuck with?
I mean, it it's not what we're stuck with, I don't think. I mean, um, i- if I may, Justine.
Yes.
Can you interrupt? Yeah, um, you know, and and to try to break that, breaking that cycle is one of the reasons that we reviewed all legal recourse with Board of Health, everything. Thing that's available to the town. Um, and just, I mean, generally speaking, you could look at the statutes, you know, there, you know, there's different ways to enforce it. There are fines, there are all types of things. Everything has been explored, um, and we're prepared to take any action and, you know, and we're prepared to pull the trigger at this time. Um, again, um. All that needs to happen is an additional conversation with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, um. And what they'll decide, um, with, you know, we'll advise them, of course, and then they'll decide the talent, decide how it wishes to proceed. But I just want you to rest assured that every single option has been explored.
Okay.
We are prepared to move on any option. Any and all.
I hear you. Good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Alright, great.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments regarding this? Alright, so I think that, you know, we'll, we'll monitor this. I'm sure we'll be updated, um, by Board of Selectmen, by by the Board of Health, um, as they continue to have their conversations. Um, one thing that's, that's fairly new is, um, in the past, I think the past three or four months, we have, uh, we have a liaison to the, from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Health. Um, which wasn't something that we've really had in the past and, um, so, you know, there'll, there will be a mem, one member there and then we can draw everybody in, uh, when, if that. Becomes a need as well, so we can have those conversations. Um, the other thing I'm wondering is in light of the, you know, so this memo is obviously pretty extensive that that Megan put together, um, but I do see that, you know, it's not something that. Um, so it was dated early December, so obviously Kathleen, it's not something that you guys had seen before that, correct?
Right, right.
So it might be worth, um, you know, occasionally updating, um. You know, I don't know if, you know, if if there's stuff that can be updated to this memo. Um, in the near, in the future, that maybe keep this as an ongoing document that, you know, every once in a while Megan might even be able to come to. You know, a a quick meeting and say, these are the updates that we can share.
And she has, she's come, she's given us some, some of this, so.
Oh, good, okay, alright.
And Chris, Chris comes to our meetings too.
Okay.
He's our liaison.
Excellent. So, um, yes, because it, we absolutely, I mean, I think the the ultimate goal is to protect our residents, so, you know, and I think that we're all on the same page with that, so. Um, we would like to definitely keep, keep that moving forward.
Right, right. Um, so. Um, is it okay if Caroline from our committee asks something? Caroline, did you want to say something? Is that okay?
If she had a question, if it's, if it's like a, it's up to you, Madam Chair, but I think.
Yeah, I'm asking a chair.
If it's a question, I think it's.
Is it a question?
Is it a, yeah, is it a question? What we have to be careful, what we're, what we're dealing with obviously is, is, um, open meeting law, right? So, um, if she has a question to ask, absolutely, um, but if she's.
She said, no, forget it.
I apologize. No, so, so if it had been a posted, if it had been a posted joint meeting, then other members of the board could have spoken in support or.
That's okay.
So I apologize for the confusion on that, though.
And and thank you for all the work you're doing, Kathleen.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. Alright.
Alright, so then we will revisit this and, uh, and go from there.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Alright, um. Okay, so next. Uh, is the joint meeting between the Board of Health and the Mayor Board of Selectmen. Point of order real quick, Greg, do they need to. To meet their meeting?
I mean, it's already publicly posted. I don't know if they need to open their meeting specifically because we don't have timestamp for their meeting. I mean, I made their agenda, so that I don't, there's not a timestamp for for their. It doesn't say by this time or anything like that. It's just publicly posted that they will be meeting now, starting at seven o'clock, so I think we're okay.
Okay, alright, no worries. Um, alright, so at the meeting back on, uh, December second, uh. We were talking as a board about, um, about COVID in general. Um, mask mandates, uh, the state of the pandemic and, um, and like I said, we have, you know, over the past few months, had a liaison to the Board of, the Board of Health. Uh, Jeff is officially the liaison, but I've taken on the duties for, um, for a few months. I probably will be taking it over, um, if the board is okay with that. Um, so I've been sitting in on the Board of Health meetings to kind of find out. Um. What's, what they are talking about, what they're concerned about, um, and how they're dealing with the pandemic as well. Um, and I, there are a fair amount of ways that, um, the town since March has responded to the pandemic, both. Um, the Board, the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, the police, um, the, even the Fire Department, the town staff. Um, pretty much it's been all hands on deck for the past nine months now. Um, but what we are well aware of is that if you don't see the work being done, you don't necessarily know the work is being done. So we really wanted to come together so everybody could see how this this collaboration is going on behind the scenes. And to really see what we've done, um, and and to hopefully. Answer a few questions that might be in the minds of people as far as, um, you know, if we're doing something or if we're not doing something. Um, so with that. I wanted to introduce, uh, the board members, the Board of Health members, so I believe Kathy McMillan is here. Hello. Um, I know Kelly Polachanik is here. Uh, as the health agent and I'm not sure, I don't see Lisa, but she may be here as well. Okay.
Uh, yes, I I am here, actually.
Hi Lisa, how are you?
Hi.
Alright, so I guess starting off, um, you know, we have a fair, we have a, a pretty long list of things that, um. That the Town Administration Office has done regarding, you know, reminders to wear masks, um, press releases when we switch categories. Monthly newsletter regarding updates, mask reminders, um. Post, the weekday postings, keeping the, um, the the counts up to date on the ClearGov website. Um, sharing the state policy. Uh, regarding Halloween, Thanksgiving, I'm sure there's gonna be one coming up for. For, um, for Christmas.
Right.
Um, responding to the complaints regarding mask wearing, um. And then social media reminders, uh, et cetera. So I was wondering if there's anything that you as the Board of Health would like to add. I know, um. You know, what else are you seeing with this pandemic as far as, you know, your response to it or or how how are you feeling with what we're doing as a town? Uh, maybe Kathy? Oh, uh, I can't hear you.
No, still, still no Kathy, sorry.
Lisa, you want?
We can see you.
Kathy for a moment?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I know, um, just, just I have a phone number, you know, on file with the town and I've received, you know, quite a few, um. Even like, you know, reverse nine-one-one calls that just kind of warn people about the increasing rates in Massachusetts. Um, I see, I mean, me personally, I don't see a lot of mask violators in Maynard. I think Maynard is probably one of the better communities. Um, with people wearing masks, even walking outside. Um. So me personally, I I I I do think Maynard is, is one of the better communities. Um. I think that, you know, the governor and the state has done a good job at trying to get the message out. Um, about wearing masks and social distancing and, you know, at the end of the day, they warned people, uh, to the end of time. Please don't gather for the holidays, but we know, unfortunately, a lot of people did do that and, um. Yeah, you know, I was reading kind of an interesting article actually in the Hartford Courant, the governor of Connecticut, you know, he was under a lot of pressure, well, you need to shut down indoor dining and you need to. Close everything, close the gyms and his, you know, his, he had a really good quote. He said, look, he's like, we've given so many public service announcements, all the towns are trying their best. To get the message out, but at the end of the day, sometimes you just can't mandate common sense. And people need to use their own common sense. You can only tell people so many times, like, you need to wear a mask, you need to not gather for Thanksgiving and. You know, I think the spikes were probably seeing now are tied to people who completely ignored all of the public service announcements to please don't gather. In groups, even, you know, in multiple households, you know, even if it's your own family, but if there's multiple households, you're putting yourself and many others at risk. So I think it's unfortunate that some people just aren't, but as was pointed out to me, like, you know, if you look at Europe versus the United States, we have this struggle between. Sort of personal freedoms and social responsibility and there's a lot of countries in Europe that might be errred towards social responsibility, but as we know in this country, a lot of people do. Look at their personal liberties and their freedoms and there's just not a lot we can do to change like a complete mindset. So you can do the best you can, but know that there are always going to be people. That are just, are not going to listen and they don't think in a larger sort of like social responsibility aspect and. And I, and I agree with the governor of Connecticut, it is hard to mandate common sense, even if you're putting out, you know, the best possible messages that you can to people, so. That was just my sort of initial feeling on what's been going on. You know, I even have my boyfriend's sister-in-law, you know, just texting me last week, oh, I'll host everybody for Christmas Eve. It's like, no. There's no, that's like a super spreader, like, you know, she means well, she's a really nice person, but it's like, common sense, no, we're not gonna gather with a lot of people from other households, so. That's kind of, I think, what we're faced with right now is people just are not thinking or they're thinking, well, these people are related to me, so we can all gather together. It's, no, you can't, please listen to this. Please listen to the governor, please listen to the state and please listen to your, to your local communities and listen to the public service announcements that just hold it out a little longer, you know, we've got a vaccine here already and. So that's sort of my. My initial feelings off the top of my head.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate that. Um. I I actually, so Kathy, are you, can we, can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Would you like to add on to anything that Lisa said before I have opened up her questions from, from the board?
Um. I think that, um, like Lisa said, it's just a matter of people have to be responsible for their own being, their own family. The governor announced today that the numbers are up ninety-six percent just since Thanksgiving. Because of people gathering for the holiday. Um, and I know everybody wants to. But we have to, um, really set it back until things clear out. A little better. Um, you know, it's hard, it's hard to do it. The kids are coming home from college. It's, it's difficult to do. I know that, so.
Okay. Uh, so one question I have, um, and I don't know if it's gonna be for Kathy, if it's gonna be for Kelly, um, or even Lisa. Is, you know, one thing I've I've heard a couple of times is people saying, well, Maynard hasn't, you know, Maynard, the town of Maynard hasn't instituted a mask mandate. Um, and I just want to make sure, obviously, that as a town, we want to be doing the best we can for, um, you know, obviously for our residents, like we've said. But isn't a mask mandate, isn't that what the governor has issued and would there be a point of the town doing one or is that just redundant?
I think it's redundant. Kelly, you want to take that?
I hundred percent, at this point, it would be redundant of what the governor's done.
Okay, yeah.
I agree.
While we're on that, Justine, I think the the commentary is not why don't we do one, but why don't we enforce more strongly the one that the governor has in place? And I know we we touched on this last week, Chief Noble, but I, could we cover that again for those who are listening about what the, what the. Pros and cons of of a stricter enforcement of that mandate would be?
Hi, Chief, go ahead. Hi, Chief, go ahead.
Yes, again, the common sense resonates with me, you know, there's only, there's only so much, but the officers do go up to many people who have the mask. And as I've said, almost all or most comply. It's, it's, they forgot, they got out of their car and they didn't realize, they didn't put it on, and they put it right on. But if you've watched the news and anything, there have been people who want a confrontation, who want this. With these mandates, you gotta look at, at the law. What is the police, you know, how can we cite somebody? Okay, somebody walking down the street doesn't have a mask, and then the officer goes up to them and, and asks them, like, put on the mask. If they put on the mask, obviously, nobody would expect a fine for that. But if they don't, there's nothing in the law that says they have to give us their name. There's nothing in the law that, that says they have to stop for us. They can keep walking. It, it creates enforcing it, you know, just having the mandate there and enforcing it is, is two different things. There's also the, the point of, isn't the whole idea is so you don't get too close to somebody? So the officers would then be put in an untenable situation where they have to now either go with the person, get close enough to the person, and then with their many, many encounters with other people, that's not something we want. So it's, it's not this simple little answer, just write somebody a ticket that, that some people believe. There's the other point that there's an exception. There's an exception to the mask rule that if somebody has a disability or a medical condition. And that's all they have to tell us. Well, I have a medical condition. The way the order is read, we can't ask them anything further. Therefore, that again is, is difficult. It's, 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 it's hard to put it in. So we've taken, you know, and we've been in conversation with, I've been in conversation many a times with Kelly, and we've gone, you know, our thing is to be educating the people. And, and again, we really haven't had anybody have any confrontation, you know. I, I've asked the officers on a regular basis, you know, have you asked? Yeah, I asked a few people and they always put it on. So it's not something that we've seen. I know the Board of Health has asked us to serve notices to certain businesses or to assist with that. So we have done that. But, you know, the people walking around without a mask or this, that's, that's a very difficult thing to enforce. And that seems to be what people are frustrated about, or people are doing that. But we have, behind the scenes, been enforcing with, again, voluntary compliance throughout.
But I just, well, to Lisa's point earlier, she made the, you know, statement that Maynard is probably one of the better towns. So we need to also take that into consideration.
I, I wholeheartedly agree. I, I, I mean, I, I see, you know, and most people, like I said, are following. And then again, I, I mean, I'm gonna admit, I've been guilty of it, but I've gotten out of the car and forgotten and not realized. It's, it's not something, you know, so. But almost everybody has complied and they're trying, you know. This is, this is a difficult time of year. This is the year, the time of year where people do get sick. You know, I mean, if you, if you think about it, during the summer, there wasn't the mask mandate, and people were sitting at the parklets without masks, without this, and it wasn't jumping off as much, you know. But, you know, now it is. So it, it is something that, you know, they predicted it was gonna hit at this time of year. You know, and that's
On the side now.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Everybody is inside and recirculated air, all of the things that I've read, you know, are, are factors that are coming into play. And, you know, the gatherings, in any large gathering, we can enforce those, but it's more the, you know, small gathering, you know, the, like I said, you know, a couple of families getting together, two, three families, you know, for the holidays and that, and that type, so.
You know, unfortunately, we're worried about restaurants, but I think the, the, the problems are at home. So the gatherings that are happening at home is the ones that are, we're concerned about more than restaurants.
I think because the restaurants are under so much compulsion and that, they take so much more precautions. They're decontaminated, disinfecting all the time. They're making sure that everything is done. So I think their protocols being in place, actually.
And the fear is that the common sense is not going to happen again in Christmas time. And I, you know, that's, that's the fear.
And the fear too is that people don't realize if they, they can be asymptomatic and be spreading that. They have no symptoms. So, right.
Ask the, the Board of Health, do we have any indication from the data that, that you guys get of where the spread is coming from recently? Do we know if it's coming from small gatherings in private residences? Is it from people going to work? Are those businesses inside or outside of Maynard that they're going to work and bringing it back? Do we have any indication on any kind of breakdown like that?
We don't get that information.
So I do, I can answer that question, Kathy. It's Kelly Polichonik from the Health Agent for the Board of Health. What we are seeing with our numbers is as soon as it enters a household, it travels that household, and all of a sudden you have four or five people positive. So we're seeing a lot of that. When you look at restaurants and you look, when you look at a smaller restaurant that might have a couple employees, once one of the employees almost becomes a direct contact, that person needs to be quarantined if they test positive, pretty much that small restaurant that has a small number of employees is quarantined. And then they'll start, they could be becoming positive, but I'm not seeing that in Maynard. But, you know, we talked about at the beginning of your meeting here about restaurant closures. We are seeing that some of the restaurants are, have direct contacts, they're smaller, and it's affecting everybody. But most of the outbreaks right now are households. One person tests positive in the house, and it's going through the household. I don't have any updated information about clusters in Maynard.
Kelly, this is David Gavin. Um, the questions that I've, I'm seeing from most of the folks that reach out to me surround process. And what happens when, say, I go to the local, you know, freebie, get my test done, and it comes back positive? From that point forward, what happens? Who's notified? How are they notified? What happens with the information? And then I have a follow-up question, but if you can sort of describe that for those that are listening, and so that we understand what the process is. And then I want to get into some of the specifics that Jeff was getting into about numbers, but from a different perspective.
Sure. So basically, if you test positive, you get put into the infectious disease database that the state has called Maven. Once you get put into the system, the Board of Health is notified as we're checking that database consistently through the day. That's done with our public health nurse who we contract with at Emerson Home Care. So as soon as she's notified, she will notify you, the positive person, get a list of who you think is a direct contact, get as much information from you to find out the contact information of the direct contacts. And then those people are contacted. What happens is, we only deal with Maynard residents. We have to let other Boards of Health know that they have a positive or a direct contact. So information is being shared through Boards of Health around the state at all times.
If I may ask a question at that part of the process, how is the response rate we're finding for contact? Are we, or I know that nationwide, I've read that we're having reports that it's been difficult that in some places, maybe you get a a 50% response rate when you're trying to do contact tracing, which obviously isn't enough. Do we know how well we're doing?
As far as I know, our public health nurse has reached out to every contact that we've had. She, we have, or I can't say we have, the town of Maynard. When the system is overwhelmed, or when our public health nurse is overwhelmed, the contact tracing is getting done by the state. So if our public health nurse is put in for 50 hours this week, she's gonna maybe take a day off and ask the state's contact tracers to follow up on the Maven.
And is that happening here?
Yes. I think that's why it's very important. We like, don't make any suggestions in any type of like, social media forum or any forum that contact tracing is not occurring because that's gonna set off alarm bells, like unnecessarily, and cause, you know, people to think that nothing is being done. Like, I think we're, like, the narrative around this just needs to be, people need to be a little bit careful with the narrative. If anyone has like a social media account, because these things are occurring, and to suggest otherwise, I think is gonna cause like distress and further anxiety and fear in a community that we don't, we don't need more fear, we don't need more anxiety. So just would make a suggestion that there's no contact
I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that, Lisa, and, and I will, I will apologize to the Board of Health and to Kelly because I specifically commented on somebody's question about contact tracing recently, and it, it got a reaction, and I recognized that it was because I was ignorant of what was going on behind the scenes, which is why, partly why I had wanted to have this discussion here this evening to begin with. I learned through that, that there is a Herculean effort, which Kelly just outlined, going on, on a daily basis with contact tracing. And the effort has been there, and it's been remarkable. And I, I was not aware of that. And there's, you know, I felt, okay, I certainly was wrong in my comment, and I apologize for that. I had heard through the news that, and it was strictly through the news, and I posted, when I posted, I said it was unofficial because I hadn't heard anything from the town. But I had heard through the news that the state had basically thrown up their hands because people weren't, to Jeff's point earlier, that people weren't responding. And obviously, that's not the case, but the state may be getting overwhelmed. As Kelly pointed out, the town is getting overwhelmed at times with the pure numbers as well. So again, I, I apologize to the Board of Health, I apologize to Kelly, I apologize to the, to the nurses down at Emerson for the fact that I didn't recognize that fact. So thank you for bringing it up, and I, you know, I'll leave it at that.
And I, I didn't mean to suggest in any way that the Board of Health or the public nurse wasn't doing their role. I absolutely know that that is happening, but that, you know, when they reach out to a set of a number of contacts, the concern is that, you know, they can't get through to some of those contacts. So the problem is on the end of the people who may be being reached out to by the public nurse. But that's going to be part of the same problem as the first non-response rate of non-mask usage or gathering in a private home, to begin with.
And the challenge is if you have someone from another town or another city, that's a bigger challenge. Because now you're gonna have to trace that person. So who's gonna do the contact there? Is it gonna be the local city or state or whoever's gonna do that? It's gonna be, it's challenging at times.
It'll be their same system.
Correct, yeah.
And that would feed up again to the state, so.
Right.
And do they, do they, are they allowed, like, are contact tracers allowed to leave a voice message? Because I mean, most people aren't picking up calls they don't recognize, just because they could be telemarketers or bill collectors or whatever. But I, I don't know if contact tracers, Kelly or Kathy, do you know, are they allowed to leave a message to say you may have been exposed at ABC?
I think so, because I, I don't think they can do that because of HIPAA on a phone.
So that's part of it.
It's posed, yeah.
My follow-up question before we move on, I guess it may go to Kelly, but it may go elsewhere. Once those people are identified, the other frustration that I'm hearing from people is that there's an inconsistency in the reported numbers that are coming, that are being posted on our town website. And I'm doing a daily post myself on the numbers, but I'm just taking it off of the town's report and then putting it onto my own and, and spreading it out. Between those numbers and numbers that might be posted in the Boston Globe and posted that, people that are seeing numbers posted elsewhere, where are the num- where are the-
It, it literally all depends on when you look at the database. David, you can look at the database at nine o'clock in the morning and see 34 cases. The state can look at Maven in the afternoon and see 56. It all depends on what hour, what minute of the day you're looking at the numbers. When you look at the state numbers, they were doing a two-week average that I couldn't even tell you how they were getting their numbers. They were taking the average, looking at the population, and I, it never made sense to me. So when our public health nurse gives us the numbers, that is the numbers that she saw at a certain time of the day.
I kind of feel like that's half of, that, that's part of the confusion as well, and, and I'm not blaming anyone. It's just more explaining the fact that everyone is desperate for some kind of information. So everybody is taking any bit of data they can and interpreting it their own way. So, and with social media, everything spreads like wildfire. So you have, you know, one person sharing that it's this number, another person sharing that it's this number, you've got the state and, you know, the Boston Globe saying something else. And it leads to almost a distrust of the community where, well, which number are we supposed to trust? I think the takeaway is just that we do know that COVID is still here. We do know that it is still in our community. And the most important thing we can all do is continue to wear a mask, social distance, don't gather, wash your hands, and try to hold out for another three or four months at least. You know, this will not be forever, but, but unfortunately, and I think, you know, I'm not sure how the Board of Health feels as well, but you know, it is the most frustrating thing in the world to only be able to say that, that there is no other magic bullet, or there's not, there's, there's no data that's gonna solve this for us.
No, I mean, unfortunately, we knew at the beginning of the year that it, it wasn't gonna be good. The federal government came out and said, yep, this is the numbers we're looking at for a death toll, unfortunately. You know, as the year progressed, we knew that after Thanksgiving, we were gonna have a spike, and we know that this winter, it's gonna be rough until we can get the general population vaccinated, which isn't until phase three. And I know that is a Debbie Downer of the story, but that, that's what we know. I can also say that every complaint that the Board of Health has received, whether you've sent me an email or you left a voicemail, Beth, our food consultant and I, we are doing inspections. We are in, following the enforcement grid. We have fined businesses. And we will continue to do so if we have to. But we are still pushing heavily on education with the face covering mandate.
And remember, we're coming into flu season on top of it. So you know, following those mandates is really critical right now.
Does anyone know, is there any, I don't know offhand, but like at the high school, does, do the schools, are they doing any of their own outreach, like do the school committees or anything to sort of, because I know in a lot of communities, I keep hearing of this, there's these high school kids that have had a party, and now then they have to shut down all of the in-person learning for, you know, two or three weeks. I know it's some of the younger people, because as Kelly, Kathy pointed out, there's a lot of college kids back home now, and they may not take it as seriously, you know. I, I, I don't know if there's anything like in the high school or the school committees are doing any of their own type of like outreach to
Has the school committee, has, has the school committee interacted with the Board of Health?
The school department works very closely with the public health nurse. The public health nurse's main target right now is schools, daycares, excuse me, group homes. And there was one more, and I apologize, I don't have that note in front of me, that she really gears a lot of her time to. So she is working with the school to part, school department very, very closely. I will say that I I haven't had any complaints about teenage parties. We have complaints about, you know, I mean, over the summer, there was block parties that we got complaints about. You know, backyard weddings, we got complaints about. But no teenage parties. That's great, because in a lot of towns, that's an issue. So it's good that it's, hasn't been a focus in Maynard.
I will say that I, so I'm on the distribution list because I still have kids in the school systems, and I don't remember hearing too many cases that have come out of the high school period. And I believe, Lydia, if, if you are on and you, you're comfortable answering, I, I think I saw there is something that they're putting together their own data as far as positive tests. Is that correct? there is something that they're putting together their own data um as far as um positive tests. Is that correct, Lydia?
Yes, it is. Um, so what they're basically doing is when they get notified by um the Emerson nurse as to a a positive case. Um, that just goes up on the dashboard and um they, it it was sending out an email every time there was a case and not saying that that's happening every day, but there have been several. Um, would just lead to a rash of responses from people who wanted to know why they couldn't get more information or wanted to know how would they know if they were affected or um, you know, when are they gonna be contacted by the Board of Health? And it just, it led to more confusion than clarity. And so what um they decided, what the administration decided to do was create a dashboard so people could do check-ins every day. They go in and check in. Brian is in constant contact with um the Board of Health and 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 with the Emerson nurse and um, so he gets these reports daily and then um it gets updated on the dashboard and it it's just easier. I think for people to go in and look, um because every time an email went out, it just triggered another panic. Um, and no, I don't believe we, I don't think we've had any positive cases in the high school. I think there was a scare because of um, I think it was a field hockey game that where they had a potential for being exposed, but I don't believe anyone ended up testing positive from that uh possible exposure. So really, the cases have mostly been in Fowler and then also some in Green Meadow.
Those are students, Lydia, or um?
We don't know, we aren't told.
Okay.
We're just told that it's it's someone in the immediate immediate school community that needs to quarantine. And then, you know, if all of a sudden a teacher who's normally in person is teaching only remotely, you can sort of deduce that they have been exposed or that they have tested positive, but we have no um specifics about any case because of HIPAA.
Does anyone else have any other questions for us? Thank you very much, Lydia. Didn't mean to again, on the spot.
Nope, nope, no worries.
Um, does anyone else have any other questions for either Kathy, Lisa, the chief or Kelly um regarding this?
This is, this was really a good uh enlightening at the same time. Wish we had these earlier, uh but better late than never, they say. So it's good to have this conversation.
I think the important parts to keep in mind is the fact that um that the business of the town and the business of this pandemic has been and continues to be addressed um since it started. So it, yes, absolutely, you know, we probably, we should have been better at getting out the fact that we were doing this work. Um, but the work is still or was still being done, um which I think is really important. Um, I think that moving forward, the one question I would have for um for the Board of Health would be um, you know, and I think in conjunction with the town, with the town administrator, as far as, you know, the education piece. So we obviously know that the holidays are coming up. Um, you know, is there, I I believe what's what happens is so that, so as much as the town administrator takes direction from us um for on a, on a normal sense, um we're not gonna step on your toes as the Board of Health to um, you know, to to put out different education items. Um, you know, whether it's gonna be a flyer about the holidays or you know, even maybe a reverse nine-one-one call, you know, reminding people of the severity or something like that. So I think that you know, in the next couple days, next week, I guess the next couple days, would there be a possibility that the Board of Health would would want that type of education to get out there more?
So the holiday flyer that's gonna be posted is complete. Um, the big message is make safe decisions. Reflect on what your decision-making can lead to as far as affecting your friends, your family, your community, the businesses that surround your community. Wear your face masks, small gatherings, if not, don't have any gatherings. Uh, that's the the big push. You you know, I sent Greg something this morning that we would be hoping to update our website. You know, with a couple of things that would send you directly to important information that the state has put out. You know, because once you go on the state's website, it it can lead you down a rabbit hole. We had the big messages, make safe decisions. Your your actions can affect way too many people.
I I would really like to commend um the Board of Health and you, Kelly, for um that there is such a plethora of information um on our website, uh on the, we just went to it, the public health uh COVID nineteen page. Um, it, you know, I I really do appreciate the fact that all the information is on there. Um, sometimes we forget to look for it. Um, but but there is a lot of information out there for everybody, so I appreciate the work that's gone into that.
Yep, didn't do it alone. I had Megan was a huge help with that. Uh Joanna, our previous clerk, was a huge help with that and our new clerk, uh Janelle.
Oh, yes.
Has they've, they've all worked on that, so.
Uh, yeah, are there any plans like the digital signboards that are like at the major intersections? I know that those, like when you're stopped at traffic, you know, it's those can be catchy and they they did have some good slogans, I remember on some of those. Uh, is that the police that controls those? Because P S A's on those. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, a- actually, the message that Kelly just shared with us should be put on that board, um making, making smart decisions. Was that what it was called?
I make safe.
That's not a bad idea. So we we did just change it. So yes, it's owned by the police, but we have highway department does the adjustment. So anyways, yes, it's, it belongs to the town. Uh, but we only have the one, so we put it downtown just kind of, well, you know, when we're eating outdoors more often downtown. Uh, and then right now, I think we did just change it to to something about the mask enforcement, but we we can um
Where is it right now?
I think it's, is it not still at the entrance to, well, I'll check on where it is, but um but but I think that's key.
Entrance of Maine, yeah.
I was actually planning on uh during selectmen's comments, making a a suggestion on the use of that for upcoming days, but it certainly can be, I I know it allows for switching uh different comments, so uh I have, I have no problem in advertising mask up like they do over in Sudbury on twenty-seven. It's right there in front of the police station. It's there every day when you, when you're driving that direction. Uh, I don't think that's a problem.
The modem, the modem broke on, uh like, you know, uh failed to work, so we can't remotely change it. So we have to go and physically go at the uh thing before we could change it right from the station.
Is that something that might be covered, an additional one covered through CARES?
We tried, we tried. Uh, it's, we're trying. Justification is a little tricky, just because the this, the town, the state knows like oh, this is pretty nice that you're getting a whole new si- signboard and but I wrote a justification, which I think it is justifiable that to get a new signboard because it is such an effective uh uh platform for communication. Uh, but it is one of the platforms of communication. So I, and I think that's another point uh that we're, although at this point, if you don't know, you should be washing your hands, wearing your mask. You like, it's, it's it's, it's gotta be deliberate. I that that like you, you kind of know, but you, or maybe you think you're not gonna get sick. I don't, I don't know.
I like that, I like that that tagline or slogan, make safe decisions. I think that's something that it could really catch on. Um, hopefully, people use common sense and use safe decisions, make safe decisions.
Were we planning, were we planning on allowing for public questions tonight or no?
Um, I, well, this was, it was more of a um so I guess they can address, uh, I wasn't planning on it, uh but I guess if there's something that's, I feel like we've touched on a lot. Um, but if, I guess if someone has a question, we can try that. Does anybody have a question?
Maybe nobody does.
Can I just make a comment?
Uh, sure, I just need your name and your address.
Sure. Kelly Calo, eleven Ogre's Drive, Unit Six in Maynard. Um, so I just want to extend my gratitude to both the Board of Health and and Board of Selectmen for this entire pandemic. I think that um, people underestimate the role of municipalities in this pandemic and I think that you guys have done an excellent job. It's really difficult. Um, especially being an employee of a municipality um to go through this pandemic. And I think that it's certainly taken a toll and people don't realize that. I think that if they don't know to wear a mask at this point, I think they live under a rock. Um, and that's just my personal opinion. It's, it's, the information is out there. Um, we can continue to put it out there, but you you just need to wear a mask, take personal responsibility. And I just wanna again, extend my personal gratitude for everything that you have all done and I appreciate um you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kelly. I really appreciate.
Thanks, Kelly. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I was saying, thank you.
Say thank you, sorry. Um, anyone else have a question? Any questions? All right. I I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thing was Betsy.
See, we could only sort of hear you.
Yeah. Sounds like you're playing the harp.
Betsy, I'm sorry, but we can't hear you.
Put in a chat.
We, I, we have, we don't have chat.
Hey, Betsy, email me. I'll just assume, I'll email you, Betsy, and 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 just ask you what your question is.
Okay. Um, look at, you know, it's interesting though, because it's muted, but
I think she's trying to
No, we can't hear you. I think she's, can you hear me better? No.
Not really, Betsy. I'll email you really quick. No.
No.
Okay.
For that.
And it's very weird because we can hear it even though it says that she's muted.
Yeah.
No, I don't understand. All right. Um, does anybody else have any?
I I do. Um, Chief, I know I I've asked you this at the last meeting and then before about um the incidence of mental health calls going up. Um, you know, I was looking at some data the other day that showed during, you know, individual states, individual spikes of those types of calls um and reports about anxiety and depression, you know, are are closely linked to uh the, these higher incidences of of, you know, being made to quarantine um for um whether it's um, you know, through, through a Board of Health type of directive or through the the initial lockdown. So um, I again wanted to check in and see, are are we starting to become um, are are we still able to to um, is our, is our um, the mental health resources, are those still able to to meet the the volume of calls that we're getting of those nature?
Yes, uh, we're still in contact. Mackenzie, who uh facilitates a lot of that, uh is again, part of the issues with all of the mental health stuff is getting appointments. You 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 can't do that one-on-one appointment that makes people feel comfortable. They do it on on the computer so that does it. All the anxiety that is just out in the general public with the numbers going up, with things going, that causes uh the anxiety. So uh, we are still responding, you know, so way more than usual. And I think uh it's, it's, it's a part of the pandemic that kind of gets lost. Uh, so you know, it's something that we have to keep, keep an eye on, keep an eye on family and everything. And I think this, this forum is a good idea because this gives people some reassurance, which kind of lowers a little of their stress and anxiety, you know. When they don't know, you know, they go off in a uh worst-case scenario, that type of thing, so. Um, I do believe this, this type of forum, where the information that they're getting, that things are being done. Uh, and that uh we are enforcing, we're we're doing that uh is helpful to some people, but no matter what, this is, this is a tough time all around. You know, it's that time of year where mental health calls go up anyways. The holiday is always the mental health call school. Now you add this and and that just exponentially uh makes them rise. Thank you.
Hi, this is Betsy again. Can you hear me now? Okay, I switched from my laptop to my phone. Uh, thanks. Uh, so Betsy Gardstein, thirty-three Concord Street. Um, so I think this question is more for the Board of Health. Uh, but anyone who could answer it would be, it would be helpful. I'm wondering, um what can people do who are asymptomatic, um and especially people who don't have health insurance? And there are a lot of people out there because people have lost their jobs and therefore their insurance and uh not always able to get on mass health. Are any of those people asymptomatic and or lacking health insurance able to get free COVID testing in Maynard? And I'm talking about the um PCR test because the rapid test is highly inaccurate. Can anybody speak to that? Thank you.
Uh, Kelly, would you know any of that? I don't know of a lot of testing in Maynard itself.
Um, I do not know. I thought we do, we haven't set up um a testing site in Maynard. Um, we would really have to show the state that there was an outbreak to kind of get those services. I believe Framingham.
Marlboro also.
Marlboro.
Marlboro and the surrounding larger cities have those testing sites available for underinsured and not insured individuals. And I believe they are the PCR testing.
And asymptomatic, isn't that correct?
Yes. I believe if you wanted to get tested, you could get tested there.
Yeah.
Whether you had symptoms or no symptoms.
Well, so I, I, I got tested, this was a, some time ago. Um, because I was traveling and I wanted to, you know, make sure that I was okay. And because I was asymptomatic, I had to pay out of pocket, even though I have insurance.
Understandable, because the travel, they don't want you to travel. That is why.
Oh, this was before, this was actually before they said, oh, you can't go to this state. That was before that. That was just me being responsible, so um. Anyway, but I I I feel strongly that, you know, asymptomatic people should be able to get tested if they want because um, something like half of the cases uh are known to be asymptomatic, so. I just didn't know if there's any, you know, money available for that.
So what about the stop the spread test sites? Um, you know, like I said, they're not in Maynard and I do understand that. But I believe, yeah, so these sites support, so I'm sorry, I'm on the uh statemass.gov that's uh slash infos dash details dash stop dash the dash spread. Um, and it does say these sites support the testing of asymptomatic individuals and are free for all Massachusetts residents. Um, it looks like the closest one to us would be Framingham. Um, actually, that I can say, oh no, Marlboro. Um, but there's a list of uh probably about twenty different cities um or towns where they do offer that.
Okay, that is good to know and it might be uh good if, if that could go on the town website. Because I I just don't know if it would, and I don't, or and in social media, you know, wherever, because especially if the testing is not happening in Maynard, I think a lot of people aren't gonna know that they could go to Framingham, or sorry, Marlboro and do that. Like, I didn't know that and I'm pretty plugged into you know, the public health stuff going on. Um, so, yeah, I think just that, that would be something uh that could be, you know, a resource for people along with the other, you know, the education. I just think that would be, you know, anything that we can get out to people in town would be helpful.
Absolutely. No, that's a great idea. Um, Greg, do you think we can add that to the website? Fantastic.
I'm writing an email right now.
Perfect.
Thanks.
If you're correct, like I I, my understanding is the insurance industry was pretty much getting to the point where they initially were paying for asymptomatic or travel-related testing and then as time went on, too many people were doing it and they were just paying. I know with my insurance, like they won't pay for it unless it's, I've been exposed to somebody or I have symptoms, so I would
So I would pay out of pocket. So I think that's like the, that's been the general trend. So I know these free testing sites do exist, but I think unfortunately those are the ones that you probably have to get there at like five AM. Because I think those are the ones that are really, really crowded, especially around, like, I know, well, at least around Thanksgiving. I know those those are the ones you were seeing on the car, you know, where there were like, you know, a hundred cars deep at like six AM and the place doesn't open until eight. So it it is, yeah, I agree with Betsy. It's, I think there could have been more done, like, on a statewide testing level, you know, to catch people that were asymptomatic. But and people just, you know, not everybody.
Also.
A hundred dollars out of pocket to pay for these things.
But they, at first, they weren't given a lot of test kits either.
Right.
Um, now they have more.
Yeah.
You know, but they were free in Marlboro. I think it's at the um Marlboro Hospital outside there, is where it is. So even if you've traveled, they will test you.
Yeah. Great, good to know. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, well, I uh want to uh thank everyone for tonight. I really want to thank Kathy and Lisa uh and Kelly uh for for being here um and and helping us collaborate. The best way to get our messages um to the residents, um because I think that's super important.
Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for suggesting this. It is good.
Thank you all.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And obviously, so like I said, we we do continue to have um a liaison. I'll actually talk in my in my members' comments, um, you know, as to be officially named liaison for you. So if if you, if if the board needs anything, feel free to reach out, feel free to email me. Um, and I can, you know, I can bring it back to the board or or we can get something figured out, and I'll be sure to sit in on the meetings also. Um, so we can just, we'll we'll all get through this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the chief, and I want to thank Lydia for also stepping in um and helping us with this. And uh, you know, everybody's done a fantastic job. And thank you, Greg, for town staff as well. All right. Then we will move on to item number eleven. Uh, and I will entertain a motion.
Okay. Make a motion to appoint Gregory W. Johnson as interim treasurer-collector for an indefinite term and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Uh, Greg, would you like to speak to this?
Yep, so uh we don't have a treasurer-collector right now. Uh, we we have the assistant treasurer-collector, we have the assistant co- collector. Um, but it was the advice of recently hired consultant firm, uh, which is Eric Kinshirf's Public Accounting Firm. Um, that we that we do have an interim uh to uh like as in a temporary basis, an interim treasurer-collector. And that'd be myself as the town administrator, in case we need any signing authority that is not already um possessed by the assistant treasurer-collector. Now, I do hope this to be very temporary, because I'm not the treasurer-collector. But I I um, in that regards, we are, we have started the interview process for a full-time treasurer-collector. So but I, you know, with an unknown amount of time it might take to to get that uh position filled. Um, I, this, this is probably the best course of action, just to make sure the business of the treasurer-collector's office can can continue.
Great. And um, and obviously, so you've you've had, we've had good luck with um Eric Kinshirf's.
Oh, yeah.
Office so far.
He, yes, thank you for asking. So um, it was specifically um, one of his colleagues from the firm, Andrea Turkelson, who came from Dedham, and before that, she was in. She spent a lot of time in Sudbury, if I recall, but she she has a lot of experience as as treasurer collectors. And now she's in the private world, so to speak, working with this public accounting firm. Um, and so she serves somewhat to other consultants that we have. So if you think of like the town engineer, legal counsel, just like uh, you know, once a week she is coming in. Uh, but she she is available as needed for the um assistant treasurer-collector and assistant collector as we work. You know, in in the meantime, until we have a full-time treasurer-collector. Um, so so far, it's working out well. Uh, you know, like, we are preparing for January, and January is when, well, we'll be working with bonding and banks and whatnot. But for for the moment, it's a lot of the regular business of payroll and expenses and whatever.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Greg regarding this? All right. Then um all in favor, uh David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too. So congratulations, town administrator slash tax treasurer.
Treasurer.
Don't mess it up.
And I'm and I'm sure you'll be able to be sworn in, so.
Yeah, that's true.
He's he's sworn, he's sworn at a lot.
Yeah. Probably now, probably now, definitely. But no, I um, it it is, you know, it's what we're doing, just kind of make the 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 office successful. It's just, it's the times we're in.
Yeah, absolutely. No, we appreciate you stepping up for it.
Smart.
Um, all right, moving on to item number twelve, which would be the budget development status.
So so Madam Chairman, I don't have a new spreadsheet to share with you, because we are now very much in the middle of trying to make that budget. So um, there wasn't a significant change between uh the last, the last revision uh that I shared. Last night at the Finance Committee, I did share with them a couple of the highlights, which I can just mention now, which is the the um the FY twenty-one, so the current fiscal year that we're in, the state has not finished its budget yet. But I have to give them credit that they are making a a lot of, they're they're moving pretty quickly, um faster than I would have expected, actually. Um, but they did just finish their conference committee budget. Uh, the the numbers were favorable to the town to a do to a degree. Um, I think three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars was the uh tuition reimbursement for charter schools. And that was higher than what we had budgeted for. It's higher than what we had expected. Otherwise, um, it was, otherwise the numbers matched what we had already had as far as our our revision for FY twenty-one. And again, the FY twenty-one um state budget will then inform FY twenty-two, but that's with a certain, you know, grain of salt, because we don't know um what changes there may be for FY twenty-two. And I know this is all very complicated, because like, you know, as the agenda title says, I I'm worried about FY twenty-two, but we're still waiting on FY twenty-one from the state. So but one informs the other, so it's kind of complicated. And then my understanding is, you know, being that it's a bill, it'll go um to the full House and Senate, and then it will go back to the governor's desk. Um, now, there's a lot of other uncertainties that I don't have the answer for right now. So, you know, but it's it's the same case that had been before. We don't know what our our insurance premiums will change. We don't know what um, uh, like I said, the state aid, we, there's still some local receipts that we're still trying to finalize. Um, and then as far as expensive goes, that's that's where the, that's where the work is. That's where Mike and I are going down the list, every department, every account, and trying to see where we can make um, you know, where we can make cuts, uh, so to speak. Most often, well, what we try to do is is identify those those, you know, basically not accepting the budget increases. And then we go from there. And the and we're having the same approach that we've had every year, which is look at the town, see the town departments and the requests that there are. Um, see what funding is available, see if we can sort of have conservative projections uh to the positive for revenue. Um, and then get as much information as we can. And then lastly, we we do look at the schools. So right now, we haven't, we haven't touched the schools' requests. Uh, although the the school's request is just a placeholder. So we we haven't gotten their official request from the school committee uh through the superintendent's office. But we've been working with the superintendent's office, so that, so the last number that you had is the last number we had, just as a conservative estimate from the superintendent's office. But that's not the official budget request. Um, but we, so right, so right now, we have not adjusted that budget request, and and we'll do that after Mike and I go through as best we can on the town side. I I did, I did meet with the capital planning committee the other day. Uh, you know, they they have a, they have a big hill to climb, because they're 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 new. You know, they they themselves are are trying to come at this um and try to get the procedures in place. And and this is a very difficult time to start a committee with a with a rather complicated charge. Um, but they, I I'm encouraged. They're very enthusiastic, uh, they're very smart. And I'm trying to give them as much information as I can. They came up with a lot of good questions for me. Um, unfortunately, I don't, I also make their lives harder, because um I haven't given them the final number that they'll be able to use for their budget either. So there was about two hundred thousand dollars that I'd hoped to have budgeted for capital costs. But but as I'm trying to get that balanced to zero between revenue and expenses, uh, I don't know how much money I'm gonna let them play with. Now, they're, per the town charter, they are, they are informed of the capital requests and funding resources by the town administrator. And then they provide a capital, a recommended capital improvement plan uh back, that is then incorporated in my budget that I recommend to the selectman by January twenty-first. So um, uh, right, so we're working with the capital planning committee, but it it'll all kind of shake out um by the twenty-first. My hope is still to have the bones of a balanced budget before Christmas, and I know that's in a week. So so it's a, it's a, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very bare bones, but it'll be, it'll be a structure nonetheless. And that's because of personal transitions and time demands. It's it's just, it's just where we are. So sorry, no more spreadsheets this week, but if you have any question. Well, I know, I know you like the spreadsheets, but if you, if um, if you have any questions, I'll take, I'll take any question.
Anyone? We will wait and see what you come up with next, next meeting.
So it'll be exciting. It'll be so exciting. Very good.
All right. Well, then we'll move along to uh the town administrator report. And so uh, there's a couple of things in there. There's your report, and there's the Code of Ethics Draft consideration.
Right. So so per the request of the board at the last selectman meeting, it was to to, you know, sort of reintroduce uh the concept of the Code of Ethics to be adopted by the Board of Selectmen that would go to townwide, particularly to the town officials. Um, and now we do have a, we do have a Code of Ethics that is applicable to employees, but but the Board of Selectmen is interested in Code of Ethics that would go to all appointees. Um, and so the, so um, town council had provided, actually, it was the same attorney that was on earlier. Um, Alex Castro had provided a draft uh that the board had reviewed, had given some input back. Then Alex did some revisions to that draft. And so I I think, I think with the, I suspect that the board would like to see this again. So this is what I'm providing, um, where we left off. Um, and so if you have any input now, I'll take it. Otherwise, you can look at it over over the holidays and get back to me whenever.
I just, one, one concern I have is um, a lot of what is covered in the Code of Ethics seems already to be covered in law. Um, and so it it doesn't make sense to me to have two very similar versions, but not the same version of the same language or something, where maybe there's a a state law about, you know, receipt of gifts. And then we have a different one, and maybe there's an amount in the state law, and we don't have an amount. So I I'm wondering why, why duplicate what's already covered? And if we are gonna duplicate it, why not just direct it right to the the stricter language or the language that's, you know, clearly been thought out at a a level to cover a a much broader group of people and has probably sustained questions and comments through the Attorney's General Office, et cetera.
My take on this, Jeff, is that the intent of these, this code is to allow the board of selectmen specifically to have some leverage when it comes to a point where either one of our own, which will never happen, or uh someone outside, I'm being facetious with that, uh, you know, you never know what will happen. Uh, or someone outside of our board that we appoint um acts in a way that is in sort of con- conflict with our own ethical standards as the town of Maynard, separate from state. And as it outlines, the way I was reading it and the way I interpret it and the way I think it should be implemented is that should we feel that somebody has met that standard or not met that standard? We have specific guidelines to which, at the time we bring them in front of ourselves to address the problem or address their issue. We can say, you violated Maynard's Code of Ethic number eight, and here is the level. And I think the the outline actually says that then it gets turned over by uh selection of the board of some independent party. Now, I would assume it would be town council or somebody similar, who would then review the um, the the charges, the event and whatever, and come back to us. And we could then utilize those specific guidelines for our own guidance for our own selves, rather than just saying that somebody has to violate a state-level um ethical violation in order to have us say something to them.
So um, let me ask, are we allowed to remove somebody now if they broke a law that seems from a, from a board?
They broke a law?
Yeah, like, let's say they accepted a gift of a hundred dollars or something inappropriately. Are we allowed to remove them from their, from their position on a town border committee?
We, I think. We probably, go ahead, Chris.
I think that would go through the state ethics panel.
Okay, right.
I think from a state, from a, from a board of selectmen level, we probably could, but we just wouldn't be able to have specific guidelines with which to point to. I think we could say, look, we want to vote to remove so-and-so from their role on the uh FinCom for whatever it happened to be. Oh, no, we couldn't do the FinCom, because we don't appoint them. Uh, so so, you know, pick a, pick a board that we appoint.
Planning board.
Uh, the the planning board. And we would then be able to cite the specific issues that we have. I think even now we could. It's just that it's not as specific as a document that would allow us to to cite.
And so I guess the question still remains, if there's gonna be, you know, very specific language in state law, and we have a more general language, wouldn't we want to line those up more precisely? I don't, instead of having two, you know, kind of similar wordings, it it seems like we would want the same wording um on on both of those issues.
Well, they violate, if they violate the state law, I think the the, there's already a basis upon which we can, we can act. If they violate one of our guidelines, it might be a little bit more general, then there's a little investigation that goes into it. And at least we have the opportunity to say, do we want to tell them not to do that anymore? Or do we want to tell them, look, you can't be on that committee anymore?
So so Jeff, you're saying that there are, obviously, there are, there are parts of this that are one hundred percent covered under state law, correct?
Well, I'm saying we have small differences, right? So maybe state law says you can't accept a gift of over fifty dollars. And we said, I think in one part, it said, we can't accept a gift or something, period, or there was no amount.
Exactly, no amount.
We'll suggest that I can't grab a stick of gum from somebody while I walk into the other selectman's room. Um, obviously, that wouldn't come up, but there's, there's other discrepancies. And what I'm saying is the state law has probably been vetted over a number of years through complaints to the Attorney General's Office and refined in a way that the one that we have now. So why don't we default on a lot of these to the state law where where some of these issues have already been hammered out, like the one I just?
So I think what would be helpful is if we end up deciding to do something like that, that we put that state law, if that's something that we want to do is to tighten that language somehow. Um, and to make it more, more like the state, to still have our own, to still have our own guidelines that maybe mimic the state law. Because I think what happens is it gets law, in my mind, it gets lost in the giant state law, you know, down the road. So you don't know, I mean, obviously, we we take ethics, you know. I I say, I take an ethics test, um, obvious, because of my municipal um background. But, you know, so so there are ethics things that happen, and but I don't necessarily know as if everybody knows what statute everybody violated. So that's what I'm saying, is this is a small, this is a shorter document that would be a quicker reference of, okay, this is where this is, this is becoming an issue. So I don't know, is it easy? It it, does that make, I realize, for some reason.
I mean, to, I I'm I'm hearing also what Jeff is saying, I mean, the example that he made about the gifts, he's, that's a good example. I mean, should we put the amount that the state says if we're gonna do anything like that, or do we just leave it open to any gifts, you know?
Well, I I think, I think when you read the specifics of of the gift outline in this, it it doesn't even, it doesn't reference a dollar amount, because what it says is a gift of any amount.
Any gift, right, any.
That is, that, but it's not, it's different from the state in that this is specifically guided guided towards anybody who accepts a gift in exchange for a, the way I'm reading it, in exchange for a promise, in exchange for um favorable decision. Not, you know, you could get a, you know, a a cup of glass.
Yeah.
That's, that's nothing, but I'll give you, but but it says town of Maynard on it, or it says something on it, you know, that you, that that's like, that you like. And you say, oh, yeah, I'll vote for, I'll vote for that, for that purpose, and it's not worth fifty bucks. And so you're not, maybe not in violation of the state guidelines, but. And so you're not, maybe not in violation of the state guidelines, but this allows you to say he accepted it in exchange for it's less than 50 bucks, he accepted it in exchange for a favorable vote. And there's a, there's a, you know, and I don't think that's, you know, that's not my, that's, I, I don't think that's what led to this conversation at the outset. I think it was, um, behavior and comments that are being made publicly, um, that were, that were the biggest concerns. But I think when you devise a, an ethics guideline, it has to be all encompassing. Um, so that you can lead to, uh, you know, ha- have a process. And that's what, that's the key, is to develop a process for, if you want to ask somebody to step down from their role that's, that they've been appointed to, there should be a process that we follow so that it's, it's not just random.
So, I, I see what you're saying there, David, but I don't think it, it, it objects to my original point, which is why not match the language up in those very specific cases? Please, Chris.
Uh, well, the, the whole, the whole point of this, when it started, and it's, it's, it's morphed into something much larger than it when it started. The whole point was that we were discussing the fact that when we appoint somebody to a committee, they are our representative and a representative of us as the board of selectmen, select board, whatever anybody wants to call us, they, they are representing us in, in that we, in the original discussions. We, we talked about when someone's representing us as a, as a representative of us in the town of Maynard, they shouldn't be disparaging the town of Maynard, other members of other boards, other members of our board, town employees, town officials and whatnot. And that was, that was what this was directed at, people that were taking liberties um, publicly and social media wise, i- in, in that way, as representatives of the town. In, in, you know, in doing so that way, that's what this was all about. This wasn't about gifts and everything else, it was much, a much more defined um, set of issues, and it's been, you know, once town council got it, they, they, they broadened it out and put a lot of different things in, and that's, that's really what it was about. It was about when we appoint somebody and they, they fail to represent the board that appoints them as a, as an extension of that board, that board should have the right to remove them. And this wasn't supposed to be just for selectmen, this was supposed to be, you know, if the, um, planning board had a subcommittee or, or the FinCom had a subcommittee, this was for a, a townwide thing, when someone is representing a board as an extension of the town, this, we thought and we believed in the original discussions, that there was an expectation that those people would act appropriately and not, you know, um, do the things that some people have, you know, found it, um, and found it easy to do and, and, and continue to do, so it's, it's just, that's what the discussion was about. If you're gonna be on a town committee, a town board, you ought to act a certain way and, 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 you know, refrain from certain things, and that's what this was about, not, not what it's become.
So actually, to that end, Chris, um, I'm wondering, Greg, is there also, because there really isn't that much of like a social media piece um, on this, um, did, is there, is there a social media one for elected officials or for appointed officials or something that we could review and, and kind of take a look at?
There can be, so the, so that's a good point, like it doesn't distinguish between, um, so for the example of the disparaging remarks. And, and I actually glad to have the opportunity, because Chris is, is right to bring it up, like it is, it, it might be a little confusing um, that this code of ethics may, it does mention the board a lot, but it does, but it does start off by saying the code of ethics applies, this code of ethics applies to the board of selectmen and its appointees, and then it goes into they shall refrain from abusive conduct, from making personal charges or disparaging remarks or from verbal attacks upon the character of motives of members of town boards, committees, commissions, town staff, town citizens or each other. So, would you say, does that apply online? Yes, could you, could you say that, you know, like, does, does that, does that, that's sort of like personal conduct extend to social media? I would say that it does, like that, that, that's, I don't, I don't think that's that much of a stretch, but is it also useful, just like the, the argument was made that yes, there may be master of law or code of ethics at the state level that, that applies anyways. So this might be redundant or, or duplicative, but I do believe it is quite useful to have your own code of ethics or your own other policies that, that sort of are a little more direct, show some ownership of the board. Um, and, um, and, and, you know, executive leadership, so to speak, of the organization, I think that's, that's important. So we, we could have social media, um, I've already asked town council to provide that, and we do have a social media, um, policy uh, for town employees, it's in our personal, um, it's in our personal personnel policies. Um, so it would probably be something that was very similar to that, um, and I can, I can provide that to the board if you would like.
The, the, the concern I'm sure that council will express, or I anticipate council would express is that there is a fine line, even with a, um, an appointed official, when they're acting outside of their role and, and having, they have their own personal freedom of expression and freedom of speech. And there is a, the, despite that, and I recognize that, and I, you know, uh, you know, freedom of speech is, is hugely important to all of us. Um, but there's a level of concern at times when people that we appoint then take upon a role and then begin to violate, uh, those that appointed them by saying disparaging things about individuals or about a group or about whatever. And having that authority of being a representative of another organization that we've appointed. That becomes, you know, a, a little bit of a shakier point where, where like, hey, wait a minute, we appointed you to this and you're ripping us apart. That's, I think, part of the trickiness, because you've got that freedom of speech. But in your official role, you know, as an appointee, you don't, because you have to follow certain guidelines that the, that the town sets forth for you, so. I know that that's always the, 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 uh, the fine line, is where does individual freedom from your membership of a board stop? For a member of the board of selectmen, I think it's pretty clear that like it or not, we're always members of the board of selectmen. And the responsibilities are always going to be there from a public standpoint. Yes, you can say, you can say what you want to say about a particular issue or what have you. Um, but we certainly should not be disparaging the town or individuals within our organization.
So I, I would be interested to see what, um, because obviously, um, you know, town council is used to dealing with towns. So I'm sure whatever they have is something that is applicable to elected officials, appointed officials or, or whatever, and probably has been vetted several times over. Um, so I think it'd be interesting to take a look at, to see what, what it is.
The social media box.
The social media one.
Okay, yep.
I, I recognize the fact that, that it is free speech and that it is a, a kind of a, a delicate dance. Um, but like I said, I'd like to see what, what they have to say on the matter as well. So, so basically, I think what we'll do, um, is we will, I'll take a look at this and obviously get back to, you know, be prepared maybe to discuss it. Sorry.
Did that make?
I'm not sure. Sorry, um, so we'll, we'll.
It's all the way on the other.
Um, we'll revisit this, uh, at the next meeting. So we can review this part of it, and Jeff, I'll dig into a little bit more of what you're saying about the state law versus the, you know, versus our laws. Um, of ours, if you have other suggestions, or if you want to mark up your copy and, and give a proposal or, or something, that I would welcome that. Um, so, and everybody feel they'd be prepared to discuss it again, um, in the beginning of January. Cool, excellent. Then, uh, Greg, would you like to continue on?
Yep, so I, of course, encourage the public and the board and, and all town officials to check out the town administrator's report, because I'm very proud of what the contributions and that the, uh, various departments submit. Um, also, we've been adding a lot more pictures, which I think is always nice. Um, maybe just a couple of things to highlight from the report, again, as I, I mentioned, we are in the middle of a lot of personnel policy or personnel changes, treasurer collector's office, the advertisement is out for the town accountant position. The library board of trustees should be doing their interviews. Tomorrow, I think, is the, is the library trustees, uh, for, for the library director position. Um, so a lot, a lot, a lot of work going on, uh, for human resources, Stephanie Duggan's doing the same job, trying to keep on top of all of it. Uh, market basket open, we're doing the mask up campaign, or trying to push that, uh, if we can, you know, just which sort of complements all the other um, work that the board of health is doing. Um, other things to highlight, all the work that the public works is up to, and all, and all the water main breaks that they've, that it's kind of it's kind of, they keep getting hit with a lot of work that they're doing, but they're staying on top of it as, as best they can, and I appreciate, um, the pictures that they added to it. And planning conservation, so again, I, I do recommend, and I encourage the public to look at the town reports every week. And the other thing I want to emphasize is that tomorrow is election day, so, uh, tomorrow, uh, I think we already have over, and I I'm gonna, 952 submitted ballots, um, or received ballots back at town hall for, for that. So in other words, turnout is already very good, um, for the, for the special election, but there is, there is the polling stations are open tomorrow, uh, at the Fowler School, um, eight AM to eight PM. Um, and I think the snow is not supposed to start until, no, I'm not gonna say anything, because I don't want to get in trouble for, so. But, but, um, I would recommend people vote early. Um, and, uh, but the, the election workers will be there, town, town clerk is on top of it. Um, and I appreciate everyone who's already voted and everyone who will vote, thank you so much for your, for your, for your commitment to democracy. That's all I had, Madam Chairwoman.
By the way, Greg, I want to know how in detail people read your, uh, report, because, uh, in one part it says, uh,
Oh no.
And including signage educating god walkers as opposed to dog walkers.
No.
Yeah, look the lad, let's page.
He speaks to a higher power.
He goes, signage educating god walkers.
Oh, all right, well, all right.
That was good.
You say.
I, I like to see who someone walks god around.
Nice.
Ah, you know. All right, um, all right, thank you, Greg. Uh, I don't have a whole lot, I do want to, um, thank everybody for what I think is, was a really good conversation tonight uh, with the board of health, uh, and all the other members. Uh, I think it's important for everyone to know that we have you know, that, that we are still collaborating with each other and, and that we're committed to seeing the town through this. Um, a couple other things, I do have, Greg, I have to apologize, um, but I do have your evaluation-ish. It's almost done, um, so we'll either put it on the next meeting or the meeting after that. Um, so I just, I've been going back and forth with Kate Federoff, um, the town council who's putting it together, so um, my apologies that I couldn't get it to you earlier than that. Um, I do also want to echo, uh, Greg's, uh, encouragement to, for people to get out and vote if they haven't. Um, I want to confirm though, Greg, you said eight to eight, is it eight to eight, is it seven to eight?
It was seven to eight.
Oh boy, well, I see, I shouldn't have said anything about the hours.
Joanna could tell you.
I see Jo- Joanna on this, Joanna.
Seven to eight, seven AM to eight PM.
Perfect.
We are ready to go.
Thank you very much, we appreciate, we appreciate all your work and all the poll workers' works.
Oh, it's fun.
Well, this, that, or that for fire station poll workers, that sounds really good.
Yeah, so, so I did want to make that little correction, so it's seven AM to eight PM tomorrow. Um, so please get out and vote, um, if you have any questions, there is a lot of information on our website, uh, on the town's website. Um, a lot of, probably a lot of questions anyone still has, uh, have already been asked and, and answered in different FAQs and, and things. So, um, there should be documentation if you have any other questions. Um, other than that, I will turn it over to Jeff.
Um, I have nothing, I enjoyed, um, marking the boundaries, uh, the other day. Um, uh, was a good time, I read up a little bit more on the practice historically, and then one interesting fact I learned is apparently the attorneys general of New Hampshire and Vermont have to meet every so often to, to confirm their boundaries, so they do it on a state level over there. But, um, I enjoyed that, uh, that's, that's, I just wanted to wish everybody a hol- good holiday, um, you know, stay safe, stay warm, and, uh, yep, that's all I got.
Sounds great, all right, thank you, uh, David.
Yeah, thank you, um, couple things, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy Hanukkah, uh, Happy New Year, since I don't think we'll be meeting until after the year. Greg, um, just a quick question, uh, has the solar agreement been resolved? Has it been finalized?
No, we're, so, um, county council, I think is still, I think that the last, the current status is that, um, negotiations are occurring, so we were waiting, if I recall, we were waiting for solar, sun power to have their legal team, which I don't, I don't think there is a local, I think they were going to corporate back, maybe I think in California. So I think we were waiting for their legal team to come back to our legal team, which is Lisa Mead, um, and to continue negotiations for the terms of the purchase power agreement and the lease, so in other words, it, now it's kind of out of our hands, but.
Did, did it need, um, ultimate approval from the school committee? Because I watched their meeting one night when there was a discussion on it, and there was some concern expressed about the, um, the ground based, um, because of where it was located, and we had had that discussion, uh, quite, you know, vociferously in our, uh, subcommittee meeting. And, uh, did they approve it? Did they approve moving forward, or where are, where is that? Because that was a huge key to their, to sun power accepting the project.
So I, I haven't heard that the, so I don't think there was a vote taken by the school committee, but I, I didn't, I didn't know that there was, um, like.
There was some, there was some concern expressed about the use of the, of the field behind Green Meadow.
Okay, so, I mean, but as you know, like the, the superintendent's office has been involved.
Yeah.
Primarily through Tim McFath, um, who's the director of building operations for the school district. So I, I, I can't speak to exactly what the school committee's position is on it, but I, oh, actually, Lydia Clancy is raising her hand digitally. So, though if you will, Madam Chairwoman, she could probably speak to that.
Absolutely, go ahead, Lydia.
Hi, um, no, we did not vote, because Justin explained that it, you, um, they were in the very, very early stages of the plans and the specs, and there really wasn't enough information. Um, worthy of us to even talk about having a vote. Um, he said that sun power would come back and present to us, and they would be able to answer all of our questions at that time. Um, and so we will be assembling our questions, but yes, there is concern about using the property, um, behind Green Meadow. So you were correct in, in, in hearing that concern during the meeting. Because although you guys may have discussed it during your meetings, it was never brought to us. Um, that, it was the first we had heard of it.
Okay.
And so, um, because it, it hadn't been part of the original consideration, um, we we have questions regarding how is it going to impact, um, just the use of that space of the, the vernal pools, um, is it gonna affect our MSBA uh, bid, um? There are just, there were several questions that we're going to need answers to, and I, and I think that you know, um, part of it also was the fact that when Michelle had originally looked into getting solar panels, um, it was under a completely different type of business agreement. And so it's all, all, the whole thing has been restructured and redone, and, and it's all news to us, um, for the most part. So, um, yeah, we have a lot to absorb and digest.
Okay.
Um, next point, sorry for the damp, damp news, Greg. Uh, the, uh, next is budget subcommittee meeting, we are meeting Monday night. Um, although there might not be much to share, given what we heard earlier, but at least we'll get a, a brief update. On, on that, and the last thing gets to where, um, we had spoken earlier about, uh, the police sign. And, um, what, what brings it to my attention or what, what my thoughts were. Uh, this week I noticed and learned, I don't. Uh, this week I noticed and learned, I don't think, I don't remember hearing that the Christmas tree drop off at the Boys and Girls Club was going to no longer take place where people could for free drop their Christmas trees at the Boys and Girls Club, have it picked up by the DPW and chipped up. And it's on the town website that now only town residents will be able to bring their trees over to the DPW and pay five dollars and they will chip them up there. I assume that's to cover costs, but I don't know, because I, I hadn't heard this. And if I, if we had, I missed it. So my thought was, I, I'm already hearing complaints about it, and people are saying they're going to drop their trees off at the Boys and Girls Club anyway. Uh, I think we need to start making the, that, that information widely available to people, because, you know, as you said just a few minutes ago, Christmas is a week away. And many people, the day after Christmas, take their trees down and start putting them over there. Um, and I think we should use the police sign.
Right.
Sooner rather than later to say, please, no, Christmas tree drop off uh, will not be taking place, the Boys and Girls Club somehow, to make it a quick enough to, to be able to fit there. Um, and sort of advertising that. Um, because I think that's going to come as a surprise to many, many people that they can't drop their trees off. That was a mountain of trees that would be left there, and they would pick it up, you know, every other week, if not even more often, and it would become a mountain within a day. So, um, and I, apparently, there must have been people from other towns using it too, because that's why we're limiting it, limiting it to Maynard, but. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm all for meeting the cost. We can't, we can't expend the, uh, you know, the, the services of our staff to be chipping up the Christmas trees. Um, I think we need to at least have a plan to get the word out, whether it's a reverse nine-one-one or the use of the sign or a combination of all of the above. Um, but just so people know, sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Okay.
That is it.
All right, Arment.
Got a couple of things. Uh, one, and I'm, I'm sure that Justine and, uh, Jeff, I think we're on that call for the Housing Protection Plan, the public forum, I think was very informative, uh, interesting statistics, uh, for us to regurgitate and look at and digest, I guess. Um, but I think that's, uh, it's, it's a good forum. It was a great participation. There was a lot of people that tuned in. The other thing was the Powder Mill Corridor Public Forum, that was also very, um, informative. Um, and if you get a chance, you should go on YouTube and, uh, watch Bill Nemzer in action. Now, he narrates, uh, an entire presentation on Powder Mill Corridor, and it's, it's, uh, it's really, really good. Uh, he's done a nice job with it. Um, so that, again, some great information there for us to, uh, look at, and obviously more things will be coming down the pike. Um, and then, um, maybe some of you already have heard that, uh, Jerry Beck and I have teamed up to co-chair the Public Arts Program that we're gonna kick off soon. Um, you'll hear more about it, but we're, we've just been talking right now and, and, um, putting together a committee. Um, we're gonna, uh, more, more things will develop as you, as we go along. I think you're gonna hear some exciting things that are going to be happening with, with that program. Um, and the, uh, last, uh, piece that I had a conversation, and I know Greg, you had a conversation with Amy Lovelace today. Um, and, um, I think some, some interesting things in exploring some opportunities there, that I think, uh, some possibilities could happen down the road. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that things could happen down the road. Um, and you and I could talk about it one, if you want, uh, man, one day. And the, um, the fire station is crucial. I'm, I've had, I think over, and I'm not exaggerating, over thirty, forty conversations. Um, and, um, everybody's, uh, reacting in a very positive way. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that a lot of people are going to be supporting the fire station, and let's hope that that's what the result is tomorrow. And the last thing I have to say is I like, I like that slogan, let's make safe decisions. So let's hope we do that, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Arment. Uh, Chris.
Yeah, so, um, just to reiterate, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody. And, um, just wanted to say it was, um, kind of exciting. Maynard, for the first time in over twenty-five years, have our very own supermarket. So congrats to Market Basket and welcome them to town, um, from, from, from here. It, I know that there's some people on this, this call and on this meeting that have put a lot of work into it and, um, did a lot of work to get to this point. And, and actually, at the day of the, um, tour that we took, the folks from Market Basket singled Becky out for her hard work and contributions to the, um, project. So Becky, thanks for all that hard work. I know that, um, Market Basket appreciates it, and, and so do most of us who know what you do behind the scenes. But, um, it's nice to have that in town and, and look forward to, uh, shopping there right through the holidays into next year. That's it for me.
Excellent. Yes, there is something to be said to have a grocery store three minutes from your house, not gonna lie.
Love that.
Um, so actually, really quick, I, I'm sorry to, to go back. Uh, one thing is, so I did want to bring up the, just the housekeeping issue about, um, the Board of Health liaison. So if I take that over, does there need to be a vote, or can I just do that? Or does Jeff have to say, please take it? I, I'm just trying to figure out how that works.
I don't think we voted, I don't think we voted to have everybody as liaison. I think we just volunteered as it was anyway.
Exactly.
But you do approve the list. So what, so like every, you know, like, um, I think once a year in the summertime, we, we kind of just show like the, this is the current list of liaisons, and then, and then we have you, maybe we have you accept the list. But, but, um, yeah.
But normally we do that, we normally do that at the beginning of the year, no?
Yeah, we already did it, but the, the Board of Health thing came, you know, that goes after the fact.
Yeah, I think it came after like September. So, um, I just want to make sure, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Did I do that? Oh.
No.
Excellent. And then, uh, so yes, everybody have, uh, happy holidays, uh, and a happy new year. We will see you in twenty-twenty-one. And, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
And do I have a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Arment, and everybody in favor. We.
Safe, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.